Good evening. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to welcome you to the February 7th. It's February 7th, right?
Yes.
Sorry, I just had a moment. Welcome to the February 7th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. This, we don't have to read that, we're not remote. Information on how to join school committee meetings and our meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and anything that you say or broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before I move on to community comments, which is our first item on the agenda, I'd just like to know, are there folks in the audience who would like to make a community comment tonight? Okay? Anybody? Okay, so I'm going to just read the preamble and then we'll take community comments. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, not more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information with your comments. Please try to avoid repeating points that have been made already. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of our community. It's not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate. Once the public comment section of our meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will not be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. All right. So before, just when you make your community comment, just share who you are and your connection to school, where you live, or if you're a faculty member or whatever. And so, sorry. Can I welcome you for community comments? You can, certainly.
Okay. I'm Bethany Burke and I'm from Dover and thank you for your time. I believe we can all agree that children do better academically when they feel safe and secure in a school environment. I do not believe that we are in agreement about the best way to go about this, to make this happen. The debate is tearing up communities across the nation. I've been a parent at the Dover Sherburne School District for almost 10 years and I'm not alone in my frustration that academics are taking a backseat to an ever-growing number of seemingly disconnected initiatives and increasing levels of bureaucracy. I recently read that over the past 10 years, the administration of the Department of Education has grown 92%, teachers 8% and students 7%. The statistic resonates with me as I consider DS's recent priorities. Parents are becoming increasingly frustrated as we continue going in circles with CRT, SEL, DEI and all the new systems in the surveys as well as the community meetings. In a recent DEI workshop, DS representatives could not demonstrate that there is a law that requires or evidence that supports these new systems and methods, or defend that our children are not part of a larger social experiment. It's my belief that an intellectually rich and robust academic structure is what is the way to ensure students grow their skills and individual potential. In light of this, I'm calling for parents to reach out to me so that we can find new creative ways to supplement our children's education as the gap between where they are relative to their peers at academically competitive schools widens. If you're already supplementing and have found something that works for you, please share it. Let's have a conversation about how we as parents can bolster academics and best serve all of DS's children. Thank you. It's BethanyBurke@icloud.com.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Any other community comments? Okay. Do we have any on the web?
No.
All right. At this time, community comments is closed and we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda. And those are our reports. We begin with the superintendent's update. Superintendent McCoy.
Thank you. Switch screens from Zoom. All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy February 7th, not 14th. So a few updates. The first is the community forum that we held around the topics of diversity equity and inclusion. It was last Tuesday with Dr. Hoyt. We had roughly 45 people in attendance, including three school administrators and five school committee members who came to listen and engage in conversation. The agenda that initially went out really focused on kind of framing our conversation, allowing for small group work around the aspects of identity that people were perhaps challenged with or struggling with, and then looking at our roadmap, moving forward, the draft roadmap, and seeing what makes sense and what questions are out there that we can continue to address as we move forward. And I think quickly, Dr. Hoyt read the room that there was a lot of questions that wanted to be addressed publicly, and so we shifted the agenda more towards just an open forum. There were several questions asked and answered by Denny, myself, and Dr. Hoyt. I think follow-up responses that we've heard, many people felt like it was an informative evening with good information shared. They've had a little bit more confidence and faith in the work moving forward. However, there are still, you know, others out there who feel differently and I think therefore our conversations have to continue and luckily we have two more dates on the books. I think a few of the takeaways that I personally wrote down and will act upon is that making sure that our community realizes that we are using data points beyond just the NYU audit and looking at the information we have from the Metro West Youth Adolescent Health Survey, from Challenge Success, from some of the survey we do in schools and through DUSI. Another point too is coming out of the pandemic, we saw such drastic shifts in both our students' academic readiness as well as their social emotional wellness, that we've really been focusing on student support and MTSS the last few years as means to meet students where they are and move them forward, as well as trying to be overly transparent around our DEI work because I know there is reservation. I want to make sure everybody knows what we're doing and that things are transparent. So in doing that, I think there has been a shift in the communication that has come from at least my office as well as perhaps from the schools in terms of what we're sharing, really focused on SEL, really focused on interventions and MTSS work and really focused on DEI. And unfortunately, while there is incredible work happening every day in the classrooms with our students and our educators, that hasn't been on the front page of our news and we need to make sure that remains there because that work continues. So more of an effort to make sure that people realize the good that work that's continuing in the classroom. And lastly, a takeaway which is always a good reminder and I, you know, try to pride myself on this in any of the work that I do, whether it's the pandemic coming up with three new systems of educating kids or the Portrait of a Graduate, is taking a measured approach, just making sure that we do things slowly and thoughtfully and that we monitor our progress along the way so that if something needs to shift or change, you know, we know what variables have affected it and we can make that shift without changing everything at once. So that's the update on the community forum. A quick update on our human resources situation. As you know, the Collins Center for Me last did an organizational study of central office last year, which you've all had a chance to read. One of their findings was they thought perhaps some more support around human resources, specifically at the region, because we are our own municipality, would be helpful. So we have engaged Dr. Tom Campbell, who is a hired retired HR director from Needham, some of you know from Former Lives, who has come to work with us. He's already spent one day in district, meeting with central office principals and a few key HR folks in our central office who do small tasks here and there, last week, and he's coming back on Thursday to spend time with each of us on a one-to-one basis. He's also supplemented the research and the survey work that the Collins Center did to get more granular about what our needs moving forward. So we'll certainly let you know what he finds and what he recommends moving forward. The calendar task force, if you have not yet had a chance to let Ms. Sharon know who would like to volunteer for that work moving forward, please do. I have reached out to two communities who have undergone similar task forces in the last year or so and asked for their templates in terms of the calendar that their task force went through with meetings, with surveys, with community conversations, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel and certainly we can make them our own, but it's a good starting place in terms of trying to find our own path forward, in terms of what holidays and celebrations we want to recognize as a district and how we can support all students in addressing homework and assessments on perhaps days that they are in school. Tier focus monitoring is a process mandated by the Department of Education and it happens usually in a cyclical cycle, but because of the pandemic, I think somehow they all backlogged and we had three reviews in a very short amount of time. One around special education and making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students who have disabilities, civil rights, as well as our English language learner program. So thanks to Denny and Kate McCarthy, we submitted all of the evidence and documents that we're meeting the state mandates to the state. They have since come on the premise, interviewed relevant people, looked through our files to make sure that the things we promised them would be there are there. In our preliminary conversations, we've gotten lots of recommendations and commendations about things that are going well, small tweaks we need to do here and there, but, you know, very minor relative to the big picture of all of the things that we have to do according to the state. So once we have the final report, we'll certainly share that with you and the rest of the community. Special education is taking it a step farther beyond the Department of Education. So as you know, in 2018, we worked with Deb Levine and Dorsey Yearley to look at the organization of our administration in special education. They proposed a reorganization. We've followed suit over the last few years and now it's time to kind of check back to make sure that the work that we did is working, again, going back to that measured approach and monitoring progress. So they are finalizing, they just finalized their recommendation report. The central office team will be meeting this week to look at it, think about their recommendations and then see what makes sense moving forward. So hear more from us about any shifts or changes that we need and if there are any budgetary impacts. That said, again, so many positives that I just kind of looked at the commendation page around the work that we're doing to keep students in district and a decrease in special education referrals because of all the supports that we have in the tier one, tier two interventions that are getting the students the help they need in the moment without needing to refer them to those longer-term services. And my last update is the most, I saved the best for last, which is that through the entry process, Denny and I have been meeting with parents, community members, townspeople, educators, and last week and this week, we've had the pleasure of meeting with kids, which certainly was a joy. So I know you'd love to know what Pine Hill and Chickering students said, but you can wait for that in the newsletter. But our middle schoolers, so our 12 to 14-year-olds, things that they love about DSMs and DS in general, the teachers rose to the top. Help sessions, having the opportunity to do homework, get help, and it, you know, helps with the levels of stress that they experience. They love freedom, changing classes, and they get to meet a whole crop of friends from the other town. They love flexible seating, so all of the work we did around innovative seating through DSCF a few years ago, big hit. I did not pay him to say this, but I almost fell off the chair when one of them said the Portrait of a Graduate because they love actually working towards something. I'm like, you were my new favorite middle schooler, don't tell my daughter.
Including my own children.
Was it your daughter? No. Was it one of her friends? I was like, this is great. Flexibility. He loves that teachers, if somebody needs more time or there's a double up in assignments that they're willing to be flexible, although that does pile up. If you push everything off, then it just, the amount gets bigger. We did talk about that. And they love the work this year that's been done to build community at the middle school, the Turkey Trot, the Frosty Fridays. They think that really does a great job bringing the whole school together, especially cross teams when they can't always see their seventh grade friends because they're on the other team. In terms of learning, what really works for them in terms of engaging and making learning meaningful, they love Bookets, Quizlets and Jeopardy where they engage with programs or each other in terms of the learning. They love it when it's not just about memorizing, but getting it in your head, but understanding it fully. So beyond that memorization piece, those higher-order thinking skills. They love the math workshop model that we're seeing piloted in some of the middle school math classes. Anything labs, hands-on, projects partnering with others are big hits, which we know from research, but we're hearing it from our friends on the ground. And then in terms of suggestions at the middle school, no homework over the weekend. They'd rather just have the weekend to get organized for the week. However, if you're just going to take the homework that you would normally do on the weekend and squish it into the other four days, that's not a good idea, so forget it. They would love a recess or a break, just a mind break like we had during the pandemic and that they remember fondly from elementary school. More cross-team time. I know that some of the English classes, for example, are starting to allow their kids to cross-team and they get to work with the other English teacher. Big hit there. More middle school sports teams and activities that they can engage with and more choice electives. High school, bigger kids, 15 to 18-year-olds, love what they love about DS. One young lady who's a senior told us today that her older brothers were overwhelmingly prepared for the academic side of college and she feels confident that she will be next year too. They love the close-knit sense of community. The teachers, they feel very comfortable around them. They've reached out to them for advice and the teachers have always been very responsive. They love their break and it's a moment to pause during the day. They love the ability to meet with teachers during flex block, which is that last half an hour way that I can sign out of whatever room they're assigned to and go get extra help or go meet with a club. And they love the opportunity to take music during flex block, which you know is an effort of Janice Berry and Jeff Herman to do the music and that, you know, they didn't have to try to fit it into their schedule against AP chemistry or art, that they can take it at the end of the day and do the best of both worlds. Learning, similar to the middle school and similar to the elementary kids, projects, group discussions to share ideas. They love learning about concepts throughout history and discussing how they're relevant today. What did we think then and what do we think now and what can we learn? Learning about cultural practices and history when studying various countries and people, not just dates and names, but more about the country. And they love the new organization of Google Classroom that came from the pandemic where things, every teacher has kind of the same structure in Google Classroom, and they love having the weekly learning plans to see what's kind of the week in advance of what's coming up. Suggestions from our middle school friends, high school, excuse me, thank you. They feel that we need to adjust the level of expectations, that there's too significant of a difference between our honors level courses and our CP and that it's too big of a jump and too big of a difference. More opportunities for CP and honors kids perhaps to be in the same classes. We have some classes where it's a split and we have a mix of kids who have different assignments, different assessments, and obviously a different GPA at the end of the day, but they love being able to have those mix of kids in the class to at least engage in the material. They want elective credit for science classes. Not just science credit, they want elective credit. Balancing test dates across AP courses. They said something the college board did was that they have these units and they all seem to end at the same time. So if you're in multiple AP classes, you're slammed with tests all at the same time. I didn't tell them, I talked to the college board, but probably didn't get very far. They want more advertising about our virtual high school options. They've heard of classmates that have taken advantage of classes that we don't offer here but are online. We didn't know about that. We need to get the word out that there are so many, you know, options that we can do above and beyond what DS offers. They want sidewalks on Farm Street. They're very worried about getting dropped off and picked up, especially with the way that they framed how parents drive around here. More clear recycling protocols. They feel it's very confusing about which bins they're supposed to use. And they would really love access to see grades in Google Classroom when we have the scrolling grades that are constantly updated. Some teachers have that turned on and some don't for different reasons, and Challenge Success, I know, has a stance on that. But my favorite quote of the day was that Aspen, which is where we actually publish grades at the end of a term, is user-hostile.
Yeah.
That's true.
I second that.
I agree. I do too.
It maddens me. I think I actually emailed a teacher the other day about it, saying, I think I've done something wrong. And she's like, it's not you. I was like, oh, thank you.
Yeah. It chooses violence.
I feel like any program that requires people to do something called a workflow, like, they're like, oh, it's no big deal, just go into workflow. I'm like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have any other things you wanted to add from our friends?
A delight, really. It was great.
Yeah.
They'll be honest.
Such a bright spot.
Yeah.
So happy to take questions about any of that report.
That is a big report. Okay. I think I did have questions, but then I kept listening and now I've forgotten. Do other people have comments, questions, thoughts about any of the things that were spoken about?
I think the preparedness, they are super prepared, but I agree, like, everything kind of like with the AP, and I know we can't adjust that, but I think sometimes just the general flow, things kind of all back up at the end, just even when it's not even finals. Like, and I know that's been like one thing that everybody's like, it's like everybody got on the same page this week and now I had nothing for, you know, the last seven days and now I have everything due in two days. So I don't know, I don't know how we adjust that, but it does seem to heighten the stress level.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Well, and long weekends and vacations and term endings all play into that, right? So, you know, I think that the teachers do try to be flexible if you need a little wiggle room, if you have three on the same day, but then again, you have to take it somewhere. So things build up. You don't wait too long. And I think the efforts that the high school has made around midterms and finals and having an option that not everything has to be a written test, you know, the projects, presentations, discussions, videos can count for those things too. So as long as students get, you know, a significant amount of preparation for what college test will probably look like, it's okay to have some other variations in there too. So a step in the right direction, but not perfect.
And I do like some of the offerings that we're giving, you know, for like every day, you know, the financial literacy course, there are those things, because I saw a funny thing the other day, you know, I wish that, you know, I'd learned everything more about parallelograms to this parallelogram season, you know, like taxes, because, you know, like our financial literacy does teach. Taxes, those kind, these everyday things, applicable things that our kids need to know to be thriving adults outside of our home.
I heard, I was in the financial literacy class the other day and Ms. Eccles was saying that the kids do a simulation now through the class where they actually have to maintain a budget and pay bills, and it doesn't stop when they go on Christmas break or February break, they still have to pay the bills. And they're like, what? We're on vacation. They're like, welcome to life, friends.
There isn't a vacation from a bill.
Yeah, just, I know this has come up a bunch in the past, but for the middle school, would it ever be possible for them to have, I know they have like, they don't have a break the way the high school has a break, but a little longer than just eat your lunch really fast and you can go outside for a minute?
Yeah. So their conversation is more about having a break in the afternoon since the sixth graders, for example, eat so early. And they are now, as you all are well aware, last year they had three proposals for a new schedule for this year and they just ran out of time in terms of working out the kinks of which one would be the final. And so they're now at the point of revisiting those three schedules. They've, they brought in a kind of a scheduling expert to talk to the faculty, look at the schedules and see what makes sense. And so we're hoping that there'll be something fantastic in place next year, including a
Other comments?
You may have mentioned this, but what are the next steps on these survey results? Like, are there committees that are being set up to work through?
The entry?
These?
Yeah. Yeah. So if you go back and look at the entry plan calendar that I laid out in the fall, Denny and I are now co-leading what we have from the surveys from the focus groups. We've looked at a whole bunch of data, many different sources of data. We looked at a whole bunch of documents. So we're going to come to you in April with a list of preliminary findings of things that we've discovered. The leadership team will have a chance to help organize some of that data as well. You know, there's some things that we'll do like a cooking show behind the scene to save time and there's other things that we want the leadership team to really, you know, chew on and rapple with about the whys behind it. So we'll come with a list of recommendations and then the leadership retreat this summer will allow the leadership team to take those initial findings and come up with, you know, the, what the five buckets are and what the tasks and action plan for each of those five or six or four buckets will be moving forward, who's responsible, what's the timeline. So that grid that you remember from Andrew's time two years ago, we'll have a new one come September.
I was able to remember. So earlier in your comments, you were talking about the workshop and the question came up about communication, like, you know, have you been maybe over-communicating, you know, this aspect of what's going on and maybe not the academics? Which made me think about the work we did last spring with the consultant who helped us with communications. And I'm wondering where, like, what happened to that work? And I know we have a website redesign, like, where's all that living?
It's coming. This is true.
The website?
Question. So we have not continued with the communication specialist. She had gathered data through a survey in terms of how the community likes to be communicated with, we're using that to the best of our knowledge. She created a lot of templates for us, some of which we tweaked even because we've gotten better branding through the new website design process. We hope to have another annual report at the end of the year like we did in June and whether or not she helps us with that is still to be determined, but the website.
Yeah. I mean, we were looking through the data from the communication surveys about what people want to see on the website, what they go to the website most for, and that has been kind of at the forefront of the design of it. A lot of people want lunch menus, so that is very easy, it's going to be very easy to find. But I think there's just going to be a lot more clearer organization of the schools, of various departments. And I think people will be able to find all the information in this one panel right now, which is going to have news and publications in one tab, it's going to have all of our social media feeds on another tab, and then it's going to have the calendar on another tab. So all just within this one panel will kind of be a nice one-stop-shop. So we're in the designing phase right now. We're kind of transferring things from the old website over to the new website and then hoping to be able to kind of do some tests on it and see how it all rolls out in the late spring, early spring, late spring, make some more changes and then we'll see what the launch date will actually be. Certainly before next school year.
Yeah. I think that that will be big because I know just many community members will say, like, I went to look for that and I couldn't find it. And sometimes, like, I'll go and I'm on it all the time and I'm like, I don't know. And then, you know, I'm pulling things from my file. So I think that will be huge positive in terms of cleaning up and streamlining the ability to communicate and then to like, like, keep things, right? Like, I was thinking about, like, you know, all the footnotes and the things that you put into your report, that like the research basis, it's not that easy to find unless you go back to this document. So anything that we can be doing to help that process will be great. And then, you know, I've been really noodling on this question of like, is academic rigor, you know, to Ms. Burke's point, like, you know, is there, is there an issue with that? And like, I'm having a little cognitive dissonance because I feel like the experience of our, even our recent graduates, of, you know, looking at the colleges that folks went to, of, you know, listening, is that there's tons of rigor and that it's really preparing them for college. Like, I have yet to, like, hear back from a student who gets to college out of the school and says like, oh, it really kicked me, you know, in unexpected places or really, really had a hard time with that. So I'm hoping that we, in this work, that we can do more, really putting that to the forefront. And of course, we're always balancing because we're really paying attention to challenge success and wanting to make sure that we're not, like, as we were at one point, you know, for my, one of my children graduated, you know, seven years ago, and there definitely were situations where, maybe six years ago, I've kind of lost track, where kids really were, like, sent to, like, emotional stress with the amount of work that they were expected to do and that they were putting pressure, they were putting on themselves. But, you know, I feel like as a district, we've done a really good job modulating that, like, being able to modulate the amount of stress while still providing kids who want to really push themselves to have those opportunities, that we are still sending kids to the best colleges and the best colleges that are fits for them. And so I just really am hopeful that with these communication things, that we'll be able to spread the word on that because, you know, that's the experience that the students that I've spoken to or that I've had experience, you know. You know, I, you know, just as, you know, a one-off, you know, had my son graduated last year, I had many classmates who ended up in other schools. And of all of his peers, he performed better on all of his AP tests than his classmates who'd gone to other schools did. And that's had a real impact on the classes he can take in college and what's available to him. And so I want, you know, I don't want us to be all about test scores, but I also want to make sure that we're being clear, that those opportunities are available and alive and well.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think it was fascinating hearing from the students' perspective what they like about their education and about the rigor in terms of, they don't want to just learn what happened in history, they want to learn more concepts and do more analysis and do more thinking. And frankly, I think DS has been very good over the years at doing that in all levels of their classes. And I, you know, my two kids, one of them was in the top classes and one of them not so much. And they both went to college and did better in college than in high school, both, both with academic and social and emotional issues. And so I think, I guess what I'm saying is that I'm really heartened to hear that the kids are aware that the innovations that we make, like project-based learning and like flipped classroom, they like and the evidence supports it and they're, and they're seem to be, you know, excelling. And so that was great to hear that.
And to play off of both of your points, because I had, well, my daughter was with one of yours and she really took all AP and all honors in her senior year. It was hugely stressful and then COVID happened and that was really stressful. And then she, like, scored high on all of her APs, so technically she could graduate except for the major she's in, she cannot. So, but she has found college to be not easy per se, but she has not been, like, struggling. Like, other of her classmates were like, this is really hard. She's like, do you not have the study skill set? Because she's like, it's the organization, it's all, and it's all these things that she learned here about how to structure her time, how, you know, and really her study-based skills and what she learned also content-wise. And I have three very different kids, like my, my middle, you know, different track. And then my youngest, who's coming up, he's in middle school. I mean, he would definitely appreciate the outside time in the afternoon. And when you all said that too, because I, I go back to those studies that, you know, some more outside time, like a burst of walking around really does improve their cognitive ability, you know? So, so any of those things we can do to help. But I do think academically, my daughter was definitely challenged.
Yeah, and, and what's really important, I'm sorry, but what I want to say that's really important is I had a pre-challenged success and a post-challenged success child. And the, and the post-challenged success child who had much less homework and sort of the traditional academic work that people think is rigorous and more of the skills building that Angie was talking about, did phenomenally well. Like so far exceeded anybody, anybody's expectations in college. And so I'm really glad we're listening to the evidence and not sort of old school thinking. You know, that we're, we're listening, because that's really crucial. Because, I mean, at least in my small survey of two, it, it works. So.
And that kind of goes, I think probably all of this goes more specifically to my question of, I'm specifically asking about the, the, I want to make sure that we're listening to the kids and that they are truly baked into whatever next steps are being taken. Because, I mean, those, those responses were incredibly thoughtful and sophisticated and, you know, and they, they know, they know what they need. And, you know, so I, it's great to hear them and it's, you know, interesting and entertaining, but it's also probably some of the most important feedback you're going to get.
I think, you know, looking at, for example, like one of the issues that was brought up in the equity audit is, you know, just looking at the demographics of kids who end up in these classes that we've been talking about, the honors AP classes. You know, I, I do think it's important that we do a little bit of digging to figure out what's happening for students who start, you know, sort of everybody starts here. Like what are the factors that maybe we're not meeting kids needs that, that make it so that at the end there's other kids or only a subset of kids that are here at the end? Because on one hand, I recognize that, that that's not for everybody. And I don't want to be a school where only kids who end up going to an Ivy League-ish college are, are the superstars in this school. On the other hand, if there are things that in this district we could be doing to support more kids to feel like if they want that path and, and also support kids who, that's not the path they really want. And how else can we raise up other opportunities and only not just value that one, you know, making it to this very prestigious four-year college? Because, you know, I've certainly had experience with lots of kids in this community who wanted to learn a trade and wanted to do this and that and different things or wanted to go into, you know, some kind of technical productions that, that aren't as much part of our curriculum. So anything that we can be doing to further those ideas and also communicate about them to the community would be really good.
Yeah, and, and I will say just two things. One, as I said to Kate earlier in the day today, I'm going to try and say nothing at the meeting tonight. We're a public school and it's our, it's our obligation, the law requires us to, to serve all those students. And wouldn't it be wonderful to serve every student in the exact way that Maggie's talking about? That, that was really, that's sort of really inspirational, you know?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I think the next report is our warrant, which is in the packet for everyone's review. Are there questions about any of the warrant texts? Okay, moving on, we are now ready for the conversation about our proposed budget.
Let's hop back and do the financial report.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I'll flip right to the budget if you want, because I don't really have much to say on the budget.
I was going to say, I don't know that we got a big report about the monthly report, what's going on?
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's.
Tell us about the monthly report, yes.
So as, as we have historically been doing, anything in bold is new information for you to read. So as we are approaching the end of January in the school year, I looked at some of our revenues. And so you will see that I've revised the projections for high school parking and both the middle school and activity, high school and middle school activity fees based on lower than budgeted participation to date. Rather than hiding that we might be under budget, I want to sort of throw that out there. So I did make some estimates of additional amount of revenue that could be coming in on those three activities from now until June. So just to true that up a little bit. On the revenue side too, you'll notice that I increased the positive variance for interest. Our new account through the Massachusetts Depository Trust, I believe it's called, MDTT, is doing phenomenal. And so we're looking at being about $60,000 over in interest. And I, I, I will say that you may see that number climb a little bit if we're continuing to see the rates that we have and if we keep the amount of money in there. So our new treasurer's been really good about being savvy with seeking out better interest rates and consolidating funds into the account where we can maximize our interest earning potential while we, while we have those funds available. So we have, you've seen interest go like this. And so this is actually a pleasant surprise that we are seeing this kind of return this, this year. So that's it on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the only new information really is that we're continuing to see changes in staffing and sometimes changing in staffings produce savings for us. So the teacher classroom line item did increase an additional $60,000 in positive variance because of some staffing changes that took place in January. We have had a lot of leaves and ins and outs and unpaid days. So it's been more of a, more activity this year than I think we've ever seen. So you'll probably continue to see fluctuations in salaries where normally if it's encumbered, we pretty much ride it out. But there we're definitely seeing activity that does impact the financials.
Is, is that just like particular and unique to different people's family situations? Or is it pandemic related or do we think it will be ongoing?
I think it's particular to some personal issues that are happening with some of our staff this year. I, I don't, I think, I don't think it's necessarily pandemic related. Only thing I think of is that some of it's like kept up, but you know, bent, what I would say is like you save up. Do anything during pandemic and we have more people doing maybe surgeries and, and life changes and such. So that could be the tail end of that hopefully.
Have we been able to cover those positions adequately? And are there, are there resources out there in the community?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you know, hasn't been easy, but we, we have been covering the positions. And some of we're actually, we've had some staff members who've actually left the school district completely. And so those positions have been filled with, you know, people who've come in and are carrying out the rest of the school year. So.
Qualified people.
Qualified people, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Who are happy to join us here at Dover Sherburne and get the experience of being here.
Well, you know, it's, you know, you read every day in the newspaper that schools cannot fill these positions. And I think it's a testament to the fact that we have a strong system, that we have a good reputation, that folks who are qualified are willing to come here even not on the end of a school year. And that, you know, we're not, just read an article in New York Times today about a school who had to, you know, close out in Milwaukee because they literally could not fill their positions in the high school and they had to just disband and send kids to other schools. So, I mean, really very fortunate. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, I think we, we can fill the positions. It's, I wish we had more stability and where we had less fluctuation, but sometimes that's the nature of some of the categories of our employee groups. But for the most part, you know, especially at the educator staff level, when you do have changes, it could be quite different in the salary. So that's why you're seeing some swings where other ones, someone leaves, someone comes in, it's the same salary. So you don't see as much, but we will definitely continue to see that. And we try to capture it when we know. So that's just keeping you guys abreast on that. On the capital side, I just want to update that we have had 100% sign off on our roof restoration project. The warranty was signed off just this week on Monday. And the Lincoln security access system is up and running. So we're still working out some sort of the scheduling issues. But just so you know, the way it's working is that we have been able to sort of close off the classroom section so that it's completely on the bell schedule. And then the lunch cafeteria is sort of on a separate bell schedule for breaks and then the four lunches that we have. And we're keeping a good set of doors locked. So I, it seems like it's working. We had just a few funky things on the one door that does have the camera for the classroom, just making sure it's syncing with the bell schedule. But I think the staff in that section of the building, when they teach, felt much more secure. We were able to close off one of the fire doors. So when you actually come in to where the cable door is, you are now in a closed wing there. So both the door, the door on the other end is locked, the other door is on the access system and the fire doors are locked. So you could, they can get out, but no one can get in.
What happens when a kid has to go to the bathroom?
Yes, so that is, so.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask the million dollar question, but you know. Sometimes you have to pee in band.
So exactly, so if you go out, you'd have to go out and get buzzed back in.
Okay, so there's someone who can buzz you back in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The camera actually goes to the front office.
Okay.
Yes, so we did, we did talk about that because we have sort of locked that off and there's no other bathroom in that section.
No need for the emergency buckets?
Yes, no, we will not be done, but they're there.
Conversation as a problem, so.
But I always say the staff that are in that part of the building, you know, are happy that they sort of are being sort of treated the same way as the staff in the other building. And then obviously, as you know, this was a recommendation from our NIESC audit. So that is up and running.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
To, to all the staff and admin that took care of that project, it was a big project.
Yes, I mean, it was. So we, you know, we actually worked with the building inspector and the fire inspector to make sure they were okay with us closing those doors. We had them come and walk through what we were doing. So, and followed back up with some discussions we'd had with sort of Chief McGowan before COVID and, and sort of how we were going to work that. So we were able to pull some recommendations from that and re-implement. So I think, I think we have a good, a good sort of process and a much more, a better way to secure a space that's actually used a lot during the day. But some better protocols.
Thank you.
The other fiscal year 23 activity that's all in bold is that we are moving forward with the space needs assessment. So I've mentioned to you the engineer, or the architect firm that we're going to be using. I've given them some preliminary data. It is an eight to 10 month project because they really dig into the data. They have all kinds of formulas that they run with, you know, how many students you have and square footage and, and all that. They are taking into account, we're getting the schedules from all the schools, from both schools here as to what is where in the, in the schedule and what's open. They will come and do a walkthrough, take photographs. They will be doing Zoom interviews with leadership and probably some key educators. And then their goal is to say, okay, in the, in the educational scenario, this is what you need to best serve students and this is what you have and give us ways not only to spend money, but also maybe ways to use other spaces more efficiently. So I, I stressed to them that I wasn't looking for a report with multi-million dollar requests, but how we can maybe use great space that we have now differently. And so that definitely is one of the lenses that they wear as long, as well as having to make recommendations that maybe could cost some money. The other thing I talked to them about, because we've been talking here about ADA compliance, is what kind of lens they wear with that. And they do, they call it actually universal accessibility. So that's the terminology that they use. So that is already part of their repertoire as they walk through the building to make sure that every space that we particularly, particularly will be using is accessible to all. So know that they'll be looking at some of that as well.
I mean, I, yes, and I appreciate, I appreciate the asking them to look creatively and not just create, you know, like out in the, you know, wonder, wonder lists of imaginary millions of dollars of buildings. But I do think it's important in the same context of the onsite insight that we have a long range plan. Because we know it's like all the portrait of a graduate things, like how is education going to change? Like what kind of spaces do we need? And maybe it's going to take 10 years or 20 years, but I, I would like to know like long range, like what, how do spaces get used differently and how can we be ahead of, or at least on the path?
Right, and I do think they're pretty thorough. The references that they gave me were actually a couple of school districts that I actually know, personally know the people there. And they raved about them. And then I actually went and looked at some of the reports that they had done from some school districts just to get a feel. And so believe me, they will have some capital recommendations potentially. I just think that's the nature, but the timing and the necessity of them, like you said, to give long range plans. But I think they're also looking at, you know, the, not the old school, but the new school way of, of, of school. So.
Oh, cool.
Right? So we'll, we'll see what they have to say. So we're looking forward to that.
Yeah.
I forget, are they looking at all three buildings at the region or just?
No, the whole campus.
The whole campus, that's, okay.
Yeah.
I just, I couldn't remember. I knew it was this building for sure.
No, we're doing the whole campus.
Good.
Yeah, middle school, high school, and then they'll be looking at Lincoln as well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And are they going to address like for expand, like, you know, more students? Because our population is due to increase.
Well, I, I gave them our 10-year, our 10-year historical and our five-year projection for them to look at. So we gave them enough data. Yep, yep, so they'll, they'll look at that.
And is the, is the baseline, I don't know how to ask this question, is the baseline what we have now? I mean, what I, my sense certainly from my own kids is that we don't have any space. You know, the fact that these kids can't use their lockers because they don't, they can't plow through the crowds to get to their lockers before they can get to their class. And, I mean, and our facilities and the fact that, you know, this is a French classroom at some point, is the baseline that we're already out of space? Or is the baseline tell us how to use what we have better?
I think it's both. I, I mean, I think though they look at offer, look, class offerings. So they're looking at what we're offering, where we're offering it, the number of students we have. And they're, I think, looking, then they'll say, okay, this is what you need, then what do you have and how can we? So I don't think they're looking at, they're not taking this as the starting point, but they're taking what we offer, the number of students we have, their need, their, their definitions of what educational space is right now and then probably seeing how it lays upon this and tells us what we need. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sort of their expertise. So, you know, there'll, there'll probably be a lot of definitions that come, you know, with everything. And then there, a lot of the interviews they want to have with sort of our key staff is what, what are some of the, like the special programs that we have? Like what, 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 what are you doing there? What do we need? So I think they, I think, if you think about it, you go around and do this at so many schools, the knowledge they already have, you're not recreating the wheel, right? So there'd be, I think some of it is just taking our little nuances and fitting it into things that they already, they already know. So they've been very responsive and seem to be very excited. And so we, it's a, it's a long process because I think they manage it right in a way to, to manage multiple things. But I lined it up so that we would be, as I mentioned, have like the base of the report like an early fall so that as we look at our budget for fiscal year 25 and then also as we still have some money left on ESAR, this could be an opportunity to be able to use that. So I think that's, the timing works, works well. And also I, I'd mentioned to them that as far as our leadership and being able to sort of really sort of sit down with them and spend some time, it's great to have it during the summer versus when we're all doing 20 million different things. So we sort of purposely timed it this way to keep, you know, things on our plate managed, but also to meet sort of budget timelines.
Yeah, I have a question back in the revenues. Just, you mentioned the high school parking and the activity fees. Was it just last meeting when the kids came? Gosh, it feels like longer. Where did we land with that? Were we, we were going a little?
Yeah, so, so we talked about, so I, I do have some, some information about, so we were thinking about, so that's 23, right? And 24, looking at fees for 24, so segueing into a little bit fiscal year 24 budget. So I did look at sort of, well, let me preface by saying, I don't think that the parking fee was ever set upon a cost-based analysis. It really, I think, was 250 for probably a really long time. When they did increase the space and create that island lot, I think that's what brought on the $50 increase. Because just doing that lot itself, just to create it was like 50 or 60,000 dollars. And I think at that point, business office probably said, we're going to be doing this, let's increase. People are paying, let's increase it to 300. Because if you look at the. Let's increase it to three hundred. Because if you look at the annual costs and you amortize the paving piece of it, we spend, say, about thirty to thirty-five thousand between snow plowing, amortizing the paving and um the annual striping. It's more expensive than you think to repaint that every year. So that, it's, and it's about seventy-five thousand square feet. So it's basically the largest parking lot um that we have here on campus. If you go back and look in fiscal year, I went back to fiscal year nineteen um to see like how many paying students that we had. Because we had been budgeting um the same amount for multiple years and we were always meeting budget. So we had about a hundred and seventy-one in fiscal year nineteen, a hundred and seventy-two in fiscal year twenty. Fiscal year eighteen, um actually, we had it a little bit over because if, back in, when I first got here, we actually were taking in more money than we had budgeted. And um if you know how that works, anything in excess actually goes into the building fund. Because when we um, because of the bill, this is really rental sort of income. And so we supplement it in the budget, but anything over what we budgeted for doesn't stay in the general fund, it gets transferred over to the building fund. So we'd had that situation for, um I think seventeen and eighteen. Twenty-one, you remember, we waived off fees. And then fiscal year twenty-two, we had about a hundred and fifty um paying um parkers. And this year to date, we have a hundred and thirty-five. We will get a little bit more as the juniors turn sixteen. And then sophomores can park for a couple of days once, once the seniors graduate. So we have had a, a, a drop. Um and I don't know if it's the same drop that we've seen in the activity fees too from COVID, pre-COVID to post-COVID. So I think we're still trying to get everything back to where we were. Maybe we will, won't get back to where we are, where we were. Activity fees, I understand parking. Like you would think parking would just be parking, so.
Do, do we think that there, I mean, the students that came to speak to us last month suggested that there is a high level of secret parkers?
Yeah, so that is on my list. I just felt guilty asking um the administration to go audit that.
Do, do you need one of us? Is there like a sticker? Like, do we need to go out there?
Yeah, I think they do have stickers. So that, that is actually on my list because we don't want, no. But I feel bad for those who do, if there are people who are, so it is, it is strictly, it is strictly monitored at the beginning of school year, like if, you know.
Oh, she's out there.
Stands out there, but then it gets a little more, more lax. But I, I hope that's.
We get it.
Yeah, I hope that's not the case on that, but um we also, you have to look at your, you know, we have fluctuating class sizes in the junior, senior class. We can have some high classes and we can have some lower classes. So that could also be playing in that. Right now in fiscal year twenty-four, we've left it at budgeted at a hundred and seventy-five students at the three hundred. I did just look at a couple of the other towns and I didn't have an opportunity to follow up with the students just to verify where they came up with their data. But I do know, um I did know that Wellesley charged, and so I just went on their website. They actually charged two hundred and fifty dollars a semester, so they'd be five hundred dollars. For the year. Now, I think they can do that because they only have seventy spots and it's a, it's a major lottery and so, but I think that that was. Yeah, but that was one data point that it showed Wellesley being zero. And when I did my little research, it's really five hundred. So I think it's up to um you guys to decide. It is a funding source and the budget. It does not a hundred percent tie to necessarily what it costs, but I think it's a source of revenue that at some point back in the day, school committee felt comfortable charging for parking. And so it was two fifty forever and then it went up um when they expanded the lots. It, I think it's been beneficial because it used to be a lottery and so not everyone who wanted to park could.
Right.
So I think that that was a, a positive thing that now we, there is no lottery. So now juniors, as soon as they come to school on the first day, are eligible to get their parking spot. Whereas before you had to wait till all the seniors and then the juniors had a lottery. So I do think that as far as, there's no stress anymore.
Right.
You want to park here, you can park here.
And Don, I think we talked about this last time too. Of our, you know, the districts we often use as comp districts, we are one of the few that doesn't charge for busing.
So we can't because we're a region?
Right.
Yep, yes, so right, um right. So I was talking with some of my other business job alike and I was just asking. And, and so um the school districts that I were, they're like, so we, they try to equate park, the cost of parking with the cost of the buses. So a lot of them, like Hopkinton, she was telling me, they align there, so that it's equal, equal. So you either take the bus and pay this, or you drive yourself and you pay this. But they felt it was very important to be equitable in those two options, so um you're, you're right. So we offer a free option to get to school. And if you choose to drive, then we, we do provide and maintain a large lot that is just for student parking.
So then, oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
Where do we stand in terms of getting back to the kids? And I'm sorry if this is my memory.
No, it's okay. My memory is supposed to, we approved the amount last time, correct?
No, we said we were going to look at.
Right, so what, you were, you're going to get additional data, talk about it. So there was no discuss, I mean, they didn't bring forward a rate.
Right, because I asked, what do you want?
That's right.
The lawyer in me. Do we need to put that on our agenda? Because we didn't put it on this agenda, so we can't put it on tonight.
Right, but you could, you could put it on the agenda for, um, you have a short meeting on March, on um next Wednesday, if you'd like to put it on that agenda.
Oh, okay, yes.
Does that give us enough time to get the information we need?
So what kind of information do we really want?
Comparable districts, like the information you just.
But we need a region. Right, so they, they had done some work. I can go back, like they had put it, you know, so we were, there were other districts that were in the two hundred, two fifty. I think at three hundred, we were the only district that they had data for that was three hundred. Although I just showed, showed you that actually Wellesley is five hundred if you take both semesters together.
Right, so I think if we could do our own research versus, I mean, not that their research isn't valuable, but.
I'm willing to take that on this week, so I can do that and then maybe get it to everybody in time to get it into the packet. Just to report on, you know, other districts, kind of our local regional districts, so that there's enough data.
We probably should go back and see which ones they compared it to though, so that we can say, you know, you have to compare re, apples to apples.
Yes. That would be in our last minutes, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, King Philip was in there and um, yeah, I have it in the pocket.
Looking at Conca Carlisle, acting box borough.
Yeah, I don't think those are all in their data points, but um.
I am happy to put that on my list of things to, I need to borrow your pencil because mine fell out of my bag before.
And if there's a way that for us to understand sort of what the implications would be of a change in the rate to the budget.
I mean, I mean, that's math, right? So if we're, or if we're saying we budget for a hundred seventy-five kids to pay three hundred. One seventy-five from three hundred, anything we reduce off of that is just going to come off of the general.
Yeah, but then I, I mean, if there's a way to understand, like, what is it we're doing with that money now and what won't we be doing with that money later?
Yeah, I think it, to be honest, is such a small amount of money that you're, it's to really identify it like that, it's really just going to have to come from another source. So either town assessment or, I don't know if we necessarily would go into the budget and cut something because you reduce the parking rates, to be honest. Because it's, it's, it's not necessarily correlated. As I said, there's, there's, it's not really built on something that, okay, so we're not going to charge that, so we're going to eliminate this.
But it does help to maintain, you said those, that yearly source of plowing.
Exactly.
Maintenance. So I mean, that could impact, you know, if we don't have enough to cover it for that, then we're going to have to pull that from somewhere.
Exactly.
Maybe town assessment. So I mean, I think we'll just still have to engage in a conversation next week. Only once we get this data, we'll have to engage in a conversation. Because like to my mind, the conversation is, do we put the burden on the students or do we put the burden on the general taxpayers? Like, what's more equitable?
Well, and that's why I want to understand, like, with data, not just theoretically, are we going to make the taxpayers pay? Like, I, I want to understand what is, what the implication is so that we can make an informed decision.
Generally speaking, right, it's one hundred and seventy-five spots at three hundred dollars, which is fifty-two hundred.
Right, right.
So fifty-two thousand five hundred is budgeted. Whether we get that, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, sometimes we get an excess which goes to the building fund. But of that fifty-two thousand that we get in a year, we're spending thirty to forty on maintenance, so there's.
Oh, yeah.
A big chunk of that's amortized the, the paving. So it, you know, we're not paying that every year, but it's coming out of other funds in the, in the, every eight to ten years that we do the paving.
But if, but if we were to be able to amortize it, it would be about thirty to forty thousand dollars a year that it costs.
Right, okay, to maintain that lot.
If you, can you put that in your?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will prepare a short memo with all of the data that I can think of that might be helpful to us in having this discussion and coming to a solution that is fair to the children or the young adults who drive to school and also to the taxpayers of Dover and Sherburne.
Yeah.
So that we will then have that discussion at our meeting. And, you know, we may not all come to the same conclusion, but we'll, we'll vote on something and then we'll do that the next year. I feel like that feels like.
I just, yeah, I want to, they did such a great job. I want to make sure we follow up and whatever we end up deciding, but. And, and if it's going to be something we vote on next week, we should make sure to let Connor know.
That we're going to do that, yes.
Yeah, or, and, and I don't know how you all feel, but I'm comfortable voting, you know, even the next month to give us time to.
Right, yeah. It's just be nice to be able to have um some decisions made on February fifteenth. We're still going to have lots of stuff that's going to happen at your March meeting prior to your um.
Certifying the budget.
Yeah, but I don't know if that's one that it, that we, I, makes sense to push out to March because there's going to be much bigger issues that we're going to be talking about in March.
Do you want to aim for next Wednesday? Is that?
I would like to do that, yes.
Okay. For a vote.
Yes.
So I'll let Connor know.
Yes. So you'll let Connor know. I'll write the memo. I'll try and have that by the end of this week. Um I will send it to.
Well, I think you want it, right, to vote. You don't know what you're going to propose yet, though.
Right, no, I'm, my memo is just going to be the information gathered. So if you forward me anything you know, I'll take Connor's stuff. I will go on websites, I will call the people, we'll try to find out what everybody in every applicable town pays. And then also I will just provide us with a little math on, like with a thirty to forty thousand dollar amortized cost of maintaining the parking lot. Here's our delta and how, how do we want to deal with that?
Perfect.
Yeah, and you know, and if, and if there's a, you know, if something like, if there's a thought that we will be imposing this cost burden on taxpayers, I'd want that to be based on and, not on an analysis, but you know, uh some fact that shows that because we're cutting the parking fees, we are somehow going to have to.
Make that up.
Right.
And how are we going to make it up? Cut something in the budget or?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not fair to just say it's just going to cost y'all like, I mean, it's not tons of money, but like, you know, seven thousand dollars each, each town to, so that we can give this money back to kids, yeah.
Right, and I do think it's important if you look at all fees for all students, right? And I do think there's fees, although they seem high, they're, they're totally subsidized by the general funds. Like, there's no other fee category that we are breaking even on.
Right.
So there already is subsidies built into the budget for other student activities. I just want to make, I, I put that out there so that you don't look at it just as they brought parking, but that there's high school activities, that sports and all those, there is a, a large contribution on the part of the taxpayers to support those. And the fees help offset, but don't completely offset. So ways that we can provide services to students, um you know, doesn't always be dollar for dollar. It's, you sort of could look at the whole package.
And, I mean, like from, to my perspective, I look at it as parking is one that for me is, I don't want to say like a privilege, it's like an extra. Like you can have a full, complete high school experience in general, not in every situation, but without bringing your own personal car. In a way that like, if you can't afford to do the play, because we're paying, you know, three thousand dollars as your activity fee, that feels like it really impacts the ability to like have a high school experience. Or you cannot play, afford to play football because it's two thousand dollars a kid or some outrageous.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I, I don't know.
Sorry, not to belabor the point, but, but I know with athletics and drama and things, if there is a hardship, we have funds to help families.
If there's a reason why they need to drive.
Right.
Right.
We have that for parking as well.
Yes, okay.
But it's also looking at the whole package. It's looking at bus fees. It's, it's looking at sports fees too, because ours are currently three.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Three fifty, right?
Three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five. So our students, some of them play with other towns, right, to make a large enough team. And so you might have a hockey player from Dover Sherburne playing hockey for three hundred and seven, three hundred thirty-five dollars, but their Western counterpart pays a thousand dollars because hockey's a really expensive sport. To two, two kids playing on the same ice with the same coach, with the same refs. And you have two parents sitting next to each other who have very different costs for that activity.
When I, it's, you know, me seeing the whole thing, I, I know what, that we do charge fees and it doesn't all, it, there, there's a lot of instances where we are subsidizing where fees are coming from, so.
Yeah.
And it's not, and it's only two years that potentially they, out of their thirteen years, that they would actually be paying parking.
Right. I mean, I, I do think many towns now have moved to a sliding fee scale, so the more expensive sports cost more. And we've never done that. And I think, I'm grateful that we haven't done that because I think that puts hard decisions on families who, whose kids do sports that happen to cost more.
Yeah, agree. All right, so just segue, segueing into a couple other little updates I can just give you on the budget is that the West Suburban um board meeting is set for February fifteenth at ten thirty. So the healthcare rate um premium increases will be hot off the press, but I'll have my calculation ready to go. So at least we can see what way, if you remember, we budgeted eight percent increase. I'm, I'm not so sure where it's going to come in. I haven't, I haven't heard any leaks on that front yet, but um so we'll be able to at least sort of give you a, a picture of where we stand budgetarily with that one particular line item, which is actually a sizable one for us. The other thing that has come in is our Norfolk County Retirement Assessment for fiscal year twenty-four. We budgeted for a um eight percent increase. It came in just a little under seven. So there'll be a little tweak that we'll be able to do on that piece. Other than that, we're waiting for, obviously, you know, with a big chunk of our um budget is payroll and we're in negotiations with everything. So we have our reserve there, so I don't really see a lot of impact on that for the presentation next week on the fifteenth for um Warden Advisory, but maybe we'll have something when you, before you meet in March to certify the budget. So um looking at sort of capital, um Lynn sat through Dover's Capital Subcommittee meeting with me. Angie did Sherburne. Uh they both had very different questions, but coming from Dover's um questioning on our rooftops, there is a small gas component in those units. They do both the um make-up heat, which is uses the gas. And then the um air conditioning of the rooftop is still electric. In their view of sustainability, um they've requested us to look and see if we can convert the whole thing to electric, electrification. Um and so I did reach back out to our engineers and it seems like it's feasible. So we're going to have them do a quick little study to see if we have the inter, infrastructure here electrically to convert it all to electric. Electricity, so.
This is for the ones we're proposing to put on there.
Yes, okay, yeah. So this is some of the feedback we, we actually got from the meeting with Dover. So um we are, we did approve today for them, their engineers, to go do a, a quick study to see if we had the infrastructure and how much it would cost. Because I was, I was telling them that it's only a small piece of, so our heat's really boiler, hot, forced hot water. That's just makeup, so I don't think we use a ton of gas. So you want to make sure you're being smart about um changing that out to all electricity, if it's going to cost you a lot of investment to bring your, your electrical control panels up to, to speed, to be able to handle it. And um electricity right now is costing me a lot more than, than gas. But um in, you know, in the goal to get rid of all fossil fuels, we are looking into that.
Okay.
To see where we go. Um Sherburne, on the other hand, says, there's still work and don't, don't do anything with any of them.
Well, you know, it's interesting because I did get a feedback, a letter, did you get that as well? From the Sherburne Sustainability person, Ms. Dorothea. Who had requested that in all, as a, as the Sherburne Sustainability thing was really, you know, saying she wanted everything that we do to be green, electric, on, on, that Sherburne would like that. So I don't know how to, I don't know, like.
Right.
How to, how to.
Right, so she, yeah, she definitely, right. So then there's, there's that desire in both, but it was heard from the Capitol Committee more from Dover than.
Okay.
I don't think there was a green sustainability person on the Sherburne Capitol Committee, but we do know that.
What Ms. Von Herders, like how that works in the Sherburne municipality? Because she seemed to speak with authority in her communication that we needed to do that. in her communication that we needed to do that, because she.
Well, she is a high, she's a hired sustainability coordinator. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I feel like, like, when, when the towns communicate with us, like, I wanna do whatever the towns want, but if they want two different things, like.
I feel like maybe we should.
Sherburne wants, Dover wants the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, I think that maybe we should have her speak then with the people that were in on our meeting that night, because.
To communicate that desire.
And, and because, you know, we know two of the handlers, something has to be done. So the thing is, if you're changing out two, you know, the, the.
Well, at the end of the day, we're looking at, still, as I, as I mentioned, the supply, um, chain on these are, we're not gonna, I want, I need to sort of get it approved now so we can get into the pipeline, but it's not gonna be done until fiscal year twenty-five, the summer of twenty-four.
Well, and, and my worry is that I do not wanna get us in a situation where one of them fails and we do not have heat in our school and then we cannot.
Be more air conditioning.
Run a school, as much as I would like to put all this off forever.
Right.
That would be bad.
But there is, there is a little bit of, they are, they have passed their useful life. We still have to hold on to them for at least another year and a half. And we wanna be able to move forward with the roof restoration and we need to do this before that. So.
It all has to be.
There's a timeline, yeah.
Yeah, everything, if we put off all these things too long, everything becomes like a big snowball. It'd be disaster.
So we, yeah, so we are doing.
Yes, like homework.
So we are doing a little more, um, just prep work or research on that, um, to see before we go out to bid, to make sure, like, if we can do the electrification and it doesn't seem like it's gonna be uh, an, an additional capital investment for us, um, then we'll, you know, definitely do that. Again, it's a small component of that. It's just the make-up heat, so it's not a large use. Our bigger air issue would be what we do with our boilers that does fuel the heat, so. Um, and the other thing that, um, we talked about last time, uh, with the, um, bleachers, track in the field and just sort of doing some forward planning, looking at that as one total project. So we, we'd had a really good meeting with, um, a vendor who, who does all this and does it all the places around us that you'd like to see their portfolio. Um, and so they do know that we want to expedite the bleachers, but we're looking at this as far as, uh, you know, a package deal where it'll be the field, the track, and the bleachers with the press box embedded. Uh, we talked about the capacity, how we wanted to use, um, the bleachers across the way. So I think what our thought process, whether, well, we'll keep the bleachers on the visitor side for football, but that we will expand the bleachers technically on the other side to be able to accommodate both, so you're sitting behind your team. Um, so increasing the capacity a little bit, um, which is similar to some other schools. But the knowing that for foot, with football's the one sport that has the teams on opposite sides, and so we probably would keep those bleachers there, and there's no harm with keeping those bleachers there. Um, so they were doing some initial just proposals for us, looking at, um, sort of the timing for the field, the track, knowing that we wanted to expedite the bleachers. So I'm waiting to hear from them. Some good discussions that we had, and I had already done some preliminary work, because the, um, person I met with for the tennis courts, um, gave me a name for bleachers. And so when I Googled that, I did see that there are some financing options, um, which I think will be very helpful for this initial part of it, if that we can spread the cost out and, and come up with the annual payments that we might need to come up with. It might be a better way to get other groups to help us. I don't know. That gave me a peace of mind that, um, there were options out there. And it's a state-certified, um, sort of, uh, bid-type, uh, financing that we can do. It's out, based out of Minnesota. But there's a whole purchasing procurement, so, um, I think that is good. And I asked, I asked him about the supply chain. And he felt like if we went to one vendor and they didn't have what we needed, they're pretty interchangeable, and we could probably go to a vendor and find them. So as soon as I get any updates on that, um, if I have something for you next week, I will, um, share it with you in that initial. But, um, I feel, um, positive about our meeting with, with this group and just getting a better handle on the larger project that we also have coming up with the fields and the, the track.
Um, feedback, question.
Was expediting the, the bleachers the solution to the, to the commemoration plaque that we were talking about?
No, I think that was.
It's universal accessibility. It's, it's for, you know, to have the access, to have it accessible sooner rather than later. You know, there, there's, we talked about, um, it'd be one, sort of one combined structure with the press box in the middle. We talked about doing the ramp in the back so that we would forego the expense and the maintenance of a lift. Um, and so that's something they've done. They're gonna give us districts that we can go look at that have done that. Uh, I think you, I think you told me Conquer Kyle out.
I've seen that. I took a class there this fall. I walked it actually, because I'm so curious. Because we're having these conversations. It's a really good example. It has a really nice, like, lo, like, long.
Yes.
But not steep.
Well, because there's a grade that you have to follow, but also by us elongating, um, or increasing the seating capacity of the bleachers, the longer that you have, the, it's better for the ramp, for the, for the elevation. And so that actually made sense in two ways. Uh, one, to have better, you know, um, seating for all.
Right.
Visitors and, um, and home, but also to facilitate the ramp. So, and they were even saying that sort of then the handicap parking spots for access to the ramp, we could probably designate some back there in that area, and then that forgoes us needing to worry about a path from this parking lot all the way over, because that was gonna be another expense to put in some kind of walkway. Right, exactly. So, um, so that, those are the things that we're talking about. We just have to get the parking spots approved, but I think there's spaces there and we would just have signage to say, you'd probably go into the, um, parking lot, in the high school parking lot and go back that road, and the parking would be there. So, um, yeah, we're, we'll stay on them and, um, get you some information as soon as we, as we obtain it ourselves.
And then I think to your question, that rejiggering of that situation and bill would allow us to do something about a, uh, commemoration of the fan zone.
Right.
That came up.
Yeah, I think we could do that either way, because that plaque could be in the moved, but I think this is more of just making sure all of our students here, um, right now have a, you know, can accept, access everything they want to in the, in the school.
So both are important. We wanna get that done as soon as possible, so, you know, as, as much as we'd like to work on the field and, and the track, the, the stadium and the bleacher seating is a priority. And.
Oh, yeah.
Also realize that the, the group who's looking to commemorate the fan zone is graduating in May or June, so, you know, we might have to designate one on the old bleachers and then move it.
Right, right. Yeah, but I think the timing of this too is like, it's, you know, we, um, we start plotting out our, our large capital plans, like, two years in advance so that we, when we sit here next year with you, we sort of have a plan, so. Uh, and it'd give us time to research, research all of our options. And there's different turf now, right? So there's all kinds of different ways that, that you could go. And then the other piece that we have, which we are hoping to get mainly funding from outside, um, our own requests, is our the tennis court. So we're, we're working up that to put the tennis courts over here, have five courts. And hopefully get some town support, because we're looking to have one that's convertible, converted, being able to convert to, uh, pickleball.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say pickleball.
And, um, so, right, so the crowds, the, the town appeal, um, to that, and, um, so that is, but there's a new way to do tennis courts, which, guess what, costs more, so.
Surprise.
Yeah, concrete post tension. Um, so, um, we have to get a feel. It's gonna be more than I think what, what we thought, but again, I think there's also, um, some financing options, which might make sense versus having to go to someone and say, do you have seven hundred thousand dollars? We can have today. So, there's, this is almost like re-bringing back up the phase two or three or whatever of the boosters. But we're at a point now where we need to do something with the tennis courts. We got, we have maybe one more season, so it won't be this summer, it'll be next summer, on the tennis courts, but, um, yeah, so we're sort of, our hands being forced on some of this, but some of it's also already on our schedule. So it's sort of nice that it's all happening a little bit together so that you can see the whole package, and then we can decide how we wanna fund it as a whole package and not piecemeal.
So you might have just touched on this, but, um, if the town is able to use the new tennis courts and if there are some pickleball courts, do we share some of that cost? Does the town kick in some cost for that?
Well, I think that's where we look for probably community groups.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dover Sherburne pickleball lovers.
Pickleball.
Yeah, the youth, I mean, I think that's where we look at for some of the outside groups, not necessarily the, the taxpayers themselves.
Yeah, no, I was just curious about, because I know Sherburne behind the.
Fire station.
Fire station.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts, but also some pickleball courts now too, or they just repainted it, you know?
And Dover already has their tennis courts too, and then Carol was looking to do a community center or something. Right, so, um, but I think part of this too is to support the, um, sport we have here ourselves, and that we are sort of subpar when it comes to matches, only having the four, the four courts. And it's not, um, it's not prudent to put any more money into the existing courts based on the cracks. Um, you, you cannot keep patching those, so. We're at a point of no return, yeah. And we've got the, yeah, the fences are going back up, but, yeah, the microburst, I mean, just what we needed there. But, um, they're, they're going back up in the next week or two.
Great.
So, yeah, a lot, a lot going on, but, um, I think all, all, all good things.
Thank you.
You know, one other, I mean, a lot of what we're talking about tonight, universal accessibility, the, you know, the, the bleachers and the facilities in general, and back to the issue of communication, um, that's DEI.
Yeah.
Accessibility is DEI. And so to the extent that there are, you know, concerns around, you know, the direction of DEI at Dover Sherburne, this is another example of how this helps everyone. And including, like, you know, the parents that wanna come to the games with strollers.
Right.
It helps everyone.
Or, or parents who may be in wheelchairs themselves.
In wheelchairs themselves.
Parents, yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, grandparents.
As far as, you know, communicating our DEI.
And I think that's, that's where you just don't wanna do, like, a quick Band-Aid. Like, I think, I think one thing that we do well is, like, take our time and sit back and reflect and do it right the first time, versus, um, I think that was the first, where like, okay, just go cut out some of the bleacher seats and put in something. But it just didn't make sense in the long run to invest anything that wasn't really going to. I mean, they are really, they're, they're, I was over there recently, they have gone, I don't know what's happened. They have someone jumping on, they look really bad.
Lots of excitement.
The excitement of the fan zone sometimes has pushed the bleachers.
When you said expanding the bleach, I, I don't feel like there's enough bleachers. Like, when I come sometimes, I'm like, there's so many people here, why are there so many? Because it's just you're all crammed in together.
Right, yeah. So we are, we are expanding, like, more than doubling, and I believe it was. So they're gonna work out the space and then do all that calculation, so, um, like, inside, I think they were, you know, and it's, it's sort of a little snobby to say, but I think vendors like to have Dover Sherburne on their resumes, which I think is why we do get, um, people who come out, even maybe if they're busy, because it's, uh, they, they're attracted to, to the, to the name. My old director of facilities always told me that, and now that I've been here for so long, I actually sort of see that a little bit. But they also already have, the, the one firm that we're working with right now already has quite an, um, impressive portfolio of both private and public schools that they're working with, so I feel like we're in good hands if they can make this work for us.
Yeah, to Lynn's point, I think that when we talk about equity in Dover Sherburne, like, this is a big deal. Like, it meant a lot to me. And, and, and I'm simultaneously wishing, not frustrated, but like, wishing that we had had this conversation even five years ago, because on one hand, we're bringing kids back to the district who have complicated health issues, and that's awesome. It's an equity thing. And also they can't go to the sports games and watch their siblings in a way, you know, like, to be off in the corner over there really isn't fair. So I think anything that we can be doing to be proactive, and, and I appreciate the urgency that you are.
Yeah.
Are offering to this situation.
Well, I did love his term that, you know, go, going back to my architect friends, um, of universal accessibility, right? Because I said AD, he's like, no, that's not what we call it right now. We call it universal accessibility. And I'm like, okay, I love a new acronym, or not even acronym, because it's two words, but, too. You have to throw out there, that just seems like it's, um, a more appropriate term.
Yeah, yeah.
Universal accessibility.
Talking about disabilities, you're talking about.
Exactly, yeah.
Something that everybody can, can do.
Yeah. And just to that point, one last thing about just universal accessibility. So we have four, um, lunch tables that are shot, and so we are replacing them. And so I said, rather than just replace them with our regular tables, can you go tell me what I can have on, if, that's universally accessible? And so, um, I think we'll end up getting, uh, the four that we need to replace. They're gonna look different. They're still that long, but they have the circular seats, and then they obviously have the places where there's not the circular seats, right? So we'll probably end up getting four of those and interspersing them in the cafeteria, um, and making that next step towards
Awesome.
universal accessibility, so.
And to the point that I think we made last time, we have to do some work in terms of the social and emotional things to make sure that the children that go in the cafeteria do not then, as we've heard from rumors, claim the tables for their social groups, and then students who maybe need to access the tables can't. And I think that speaks to when we talk about SEL and wanting to make sure we're supporting the social, emotional, like, making sure that this is a place that when kids come here, everyone has a seat at the table.
Literally.
Literally, everyone do not like hearing, you have to sit outside because, like, the cool kids decided that new table was theirs. Like, that's not cool.
Yeah. Well, I will say, you know, all the picnic tables, we interspersed ones that are, um, accessible, so I think, um, we've, we've done more than, I think, sometimes as a parent, um, because we just do it. So I think it's important to.
Yeah.
To point out those little things, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you. There's a lot in that report. I thought, I was like, oh, it was a very straightforward report. It was, there was a lot in there.
Well, I didn't write up all that, because we'll, so, just so you know, so when we meet, we're meeting at six thirty next Wednesday night. Any budget adjustments that I know of, I will bring you a version two. We will then have a PowerPoint presentation about our budget for the joint, um, advisory and Dover Warren, who will join us at seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and then Sherburne Advisory is staying, and post that, we are doing the Sherburne budget. I think, anyway.
Bring your popcorn.
Yeah.
So, we should put on four or five hours.
No, I'm just kidding. No, I'm only planning like an hour for you guys. We're, you guys are meeting just yourselves at six thirty to approve a version two budget? So I think I will have one or two adjustments that will be able, so that we'll have those numbers to bring forward to Advisory and Warren when you meet with them jointly at seven.
So at seven, we are all meeting.
With you, yeah, all of region.
A big meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all, with all Advisory and all of Warren.
Okay.
So they all come here.
We, we did, haven't.
We haven't done that for a while.
It's been on Zoom for a little while.
Yeah, okay. They, yeah, I remember the Zoom now, because we haven't, we didn't do it for.
We got in in February of twenty, right? Right before.
Yeah.
We got all, all of our budgets approved right before COVID, so.
Yeah, and then twenty-one and twenty-two, we did it on Zoom.
Right.
Ah.
Really till eight.
We're going to eight.
Yeah.
It's only gonna be an hour?
Expect to be there from six thirty to eight. Our Sherburne friends need their slippers.
Right.
Thank you for donating so much of your time to us. All right, thank you for all the things. I'm sorry that we were all chatty tonight. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It's okay. Order in the court. The next, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It is pretty straightforward. It's an approval of the meeting minutes from December sixth. Did anyone have any corrections or amendments? Fantastic. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Lynn. Do I have a second?
Judy Miller, second.
Second by Judy Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. And the, I, next item on the agenda is just the reports from, uh, Mr. Smith, Mr. Lawrence, and the school committee minutes from, uh, the November Dover School Committee meeting. You know, I'm gonna, just in the interest of time, not belabor it, but just say to Mr. Smith and Mr. Lawrence that I really appreciated the thoughtful recap of what's going on. I loved the pictures and, um, recognized some of the kids who are in the Harvard Model United Nations Group. I love seeing that the kids are out, out in the community again and able to do these, these projects that I know are so meaningful.
Can I say one thing on that note?
Yes, please.
Um, just connecting what you just mentioned about the principal's reports to communication, to the website, and I forgot to mention that Angie's on the website committee too, so. Lots of hard work, volunteer time going into that.
Thank you, Angie.
Sure you're sick of looking at Royal Blue at this point, but.
Well, I've just, every time I try to log in, Danny, I don't know, uh, it's the same issue I'm having. I'm like, why can't I get to this? Because they're like, we're making these changes. I'm like, no, 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 no. I keep having to contact Vida, which would be great, except she's on a different time, so.
But my point is, uh, not only to say thank you, and we're excited to see the outcome. But my point is, not only to say thank you and we're excited to see the outcome, we've seen, some of us have seen snippets of it. But there's communication that goes out in tweets, there's communication that goes out in the reports to you and then there's communication that goes out in the monthly or bi-weekly or weekly newsletters. And it doesn't always tell the same story, so depending on what you're reading, you're only getting snippets of what is happening. So I think what's great about the website is all of the social media polls will be there. And when I was meeting with the principals and talking about communication, I was thinking we should cross-reference whatever, you know, in their, in their bi-weekly newsletters, they should have a link to the school committee report and vice versa. In their school committee report, they should have a link to their newsletter, so you're getting a bigger picture of everything happening because perfect example, there's a ton of, you know, academics being highlighted in the principal reports that come to you guys, but who reads school committee reports? Sorry.
Right.
And I think that families are asking for those things. And, you know, maybe there's a way that they could do less work and have more.
And these are fabulous pictures, you know, if you had a kid in there, you you might want to, you know, cut the picture out and save it for yourself.
We used to actually, whenever there was a school committee report going in a packet, it would be highlighted in the we, the weekly email blast of that school. So we've gotten away from that, but there used to always be a link.
Yeah.
To that.
Anything we can do, I did see our friend Connor Murphy. Um, right there in the home.
I know. Active. When I first looked at it, I thought it was a team of all girls, but then I realized the boys were sitting.
They just chose the other team. They removed themselves.
Yes. All right, well, thank you so much, thank you to all the administrators and other folks who put those memos together. And without further ado, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by, made by Kate Potter, I think it was seconded by Colin.
Seconded by.
Enthusiastically, that said, we are adjourned at eight thirty-one and our next meeting will be next February, next, no, not next, or next week. On February fifteenth, we will be meeting at six thirty right here, same place, same time. Thank you all for attending.